Good afternoon. I think we're ready to get started. It's an honor and privilege for Trinity Valley Community College to have Congressman Jim Henshaw back on campus. He was here, I think, about a year and a half ago or a year ago and had a town hall meeting. And we are just privileged and grateful that he decided to come back. Before I make a few more comments about Congressman Henshaw, I do want to recognize that we have Trinity Valley Community College Board of Trustees Ron Day here this afternoon and his wife Billy. Congressman Jim Henshaw is a leading voice for budget reform. The Dallas Morning News recently called him "a leading voice among fiscal conservatives." He is the number-two Republican on the House Budget Committee. And being a leading voice, he's been on TV a lot. He's been on the radio a lot. I've heard him on the Laura Ingraham Show, I think, and Sean Hannity and Fox and Friends. And I think I got an email or something that he was going to be on the Morning Joe. And I turned on TV on there at, I think, 7:30 that morning. And Congressman Henshaw held up a chart. I don't know if it's one of the ones he's got here today or not, but it's showing the comparison of the budget deficits that come from a couple of years ago where it was like $100-some-billion per year. And now it's $100-some-billion dollars a month. That chart inspired me to make a chart of my own. This is a chart. Now, this is what you can see. This number is $70 million. This is the total amount of appropriations for Bling College, Trinity Valley, Howard Junior College, Kilgore, and Navarro. Now, I use those five colleges because they educate. We have about 55,000 students. That's about the same number as the University of Texas. The University of Texas keeps $280 million for the same number of students. Well, I thought that was an interesting chart. And considering that community colleges do so much of the education now of students, very important that we continue to receive our share of funding. But Congressman Henshaw recently challenged President Obama on national television about the president's plans to triple the national debt and put government spending on path to equal 25% of the entire rest of the economy. I know he's going to be talking about that today. You know, I got the thinking trustee Day. Our budget's $34 million. I was just wondering what you would do to me if I proposed a budget next year of $100 million? You would probably fire me. Yes. But the National Review dubbed Congressman Henshaw as "representative of budget reform." And he's certainly been a hawk, a budget hawk, and we appreciate everything he's trying to do to control our national debt and spending habits. Congressman, one other thing. When you were here last time, I gave you a candy jar. I don't know if you remember that or not.
I still have it.
This year, I gave out paperweights. Now, some have suggested that you use this to knock some sense into Congress. Some have suggested. I wouldn't do that, but some have suggested that. But we want you to have this. Again, these gifts are not from college funding. They're from...
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Well, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for inviting me back to your campus. As I think about that chart and the comparison to the University of Texas, as a Texas Aggie, go for it. Take that anywhere. I see Jeff's got a big smile on his face as well. Thank you all for coming out on what is otherwise a beautiful day. I know that, at least for me, the novelty of the snow wore out pretty quick, particularly since my kids didn't go to school those days. So it's nice to have a beautiful day in East Texas. Nice, again, to see so many friends. Most of you know I live in Dallas, but I got to tell you, every time I come to Athens, I feel like I'm coming home. Athens is a very, very special place to me and my family, and we always feel very, very welcome here. And so, again, thank you. Today, I want to talk... Today is the one-year anniversary of Congress passing the stimulus plan. I come here today before you, as typical, with what I hope is an open mind, but not an empty mind. And I want to share with you some of my views of the stimulus program and what I view as its failures. I still believe that the number-one job of Congress ought to be jobs. And I think that, in many respects, the stimulus bill has failed. What the stimulus bill has not failed to do is to put us on, I believe, a road to fiscal bankruptcy. And I want to also spend some time talking about what a serious problem this is and what I think we need to do about it. And then, after you have the benefit of some of my views, I want to benefit from your views. I mean, part of the purpose of these meetings is so you can hold me accountable on this office in which you have entrusted me. So, again, today is the one-year anniversary of the stimulus plan. The president told us if we would pass the stimulus plan that unemployment in America would never go beyond 8%. He told us that it would create or save millions of jobs. With all due respect to the president, I think he was wrong. One year later, where are we? We continue to be mired in almost double-digit unemployment, some of the highest unemployment we have seen in a generation. With one exception, America has lost jobs each and every month since the so-called stimulus plan was passed. To the best of my knowledge, the only sector of our economy that has grown under the stimulus plan is the federal government. And net-on-net, there are 25,000 more federal workers than there were before the stimulus plan. And I think we have the highest number of federal employees making a six-figure salary than we have had at any time. I believe fundamentally this was not a program that was destined to stimulate the economy. It was a program destined to stimulate big government. And if you will... Can you all hear me without that microphone? Okay, see, head's nodded the right direction. Since the president came into office, we've had, again, an explosion of spending. If you add the cost of the stimulus bill to the annual appropriations bills of Congress, what you see is the president has signed bills into law that has increased the cost of what we call non-defense discretionary spending, which is the annual spending of Congress, 84% in two years, almost double. We are throwing money at the problem right and left as we have never thrown it before. An explosion of spending only to lead to even more unemployment. Now, not only has government in general grown by 84%, but you can look at specific agencies. The Department of Housing and Urban Development, when you add in the stimulus money and the annual appropriations bills of Congress, it's up 52%. Department of Commerce, 134%. Department of Energy, up 146%. And the list goes on and on and on. Now, a lot of these stimulus funds were distributed to states to do with as they pleased. Apparently, they didn't necessarily please to send it to TVCC. We have spent, as a nation, $3.8 million on road signs advertising that projects are paid for by stimulus funds. When I'm in Washington, my family... We got an apartment up there, although the family lives in Dallas. Every day when I drive to the Capitol, I have to drive by one of those signs, and it irks me. $3.8 million. Bozeman, Montana, spent $49,000 of your stimulus funds for a rubber-tilled tennis court. The state of Wisconsin took $300,000 of your stimulus money to produce a nonprofit musical called, quote, "Kids from Wisconsin." I'm sure they have beautiful children from Wisconsin. As the father of a six-year-old and a seven-year-old, I'm kind of partial to beautiful children of Texas. What this did to stimulate the economy and create jobs in America, I don't know. The city of Pawtucket, Rhode Island, spent a half a million dollars of your stimulus money to create a skateboard park. And the list goes on and on. I believe that by any objective measurement, the stimulus program has been an abject failure, except in one regard: $1.2 trillion of your money. It has done an excellent job of creating further debt and further deficits for you, your children, and your grandchildren. The cost of the stimulus program, when you do the math... And there was a time in Congress, we just talked about billions, and now trillions come tripping off our tongue. But it cost every family in Athens, Texas, about $10,000 is what you spent on this stimulus bill. Ladies and gentlemen, I do not believe that you can borrow, spend, and bail out your way into economic prosperity. And I suspect, as they teach economics at TVCC, that the students learn that as well. Other nations have tried to do exactly that, like Japan. It has failed. So when you're digging a deep hole, there comes a point where you ought to quit digging. And the president is now essentially proposing the third stimulus program. With all due respect to the president, it is not working. I've spent a lot of time trying to talk to small-business people, job creators, bankers in the 5th District of Texas to try to find out what is it that is hampering job growth in our state, in our nation, in our region. And I hear a number of things. One of the things I hear is, Congressman, when Congress is threatening a multi-trillion-dollar nationalization of our health care system, we're scared. We don't know what that's going to do to our labor costs. We don't know how it's going to get paid for. It worries us. We're afraid to start a new business. We're afraid to expand a new business. What else do I hear? Congressman, Congress passed, at least on the House of Representatives side, an $800 billion energy tax known as cap and trade. Is that going to become law? What's that going to do to my energy cost? When the average family in Athens, Texas, has to pay an additional $1,300 a year for their energy cost, are they going to be able to afford the product I'm selling? And Congressman, how about all these bailout? I'm just a little guy. You know, the federal government is picking winners and losers, and they're not picking me as a winner. They're picking the United Auto Workers. They're picking Chrysler. They're picking GM. They're picking Fannie and Freddie. They're picking big banks, but they're not picking me. And we continue to have a system where the big get bigger, the small get smaller, and the taxpayer gets poor. Why would I launch a new business enterprise in this environment? And oh, by the way, Congress is raising my taxes. The cost of capital is about to go up with the capital gains tax. Except for one bracket, every single tax bracket is due to increase at the end of the year. And now, they're talking about passing a bank tax. Let's punish the banks. That might feel good, Congressman, but if they raise the taxes on my bank, is that going to mean they're going to lower my interest rate? Does that mean they're going to extend me a larger line of credit because the federal government taxes them? We have looming storm clouds on the economic horizon that I think is preventing Texans, Americans, from wanting to go out and use those animal spirits that cause people to want to work hard, save, risk capital, and go out and create new jobs. And I'm saving the most important factor for last that I think continues to hamper job creation, and that is, how are we going to pay for the debt and the deficit? How are we going to pay for it when it is skyrocketing to historical standards? So, number one, we've already increased the size of government precipitously. And instead of channeling funds to small businessmen and entrepreneurs, we channeled it to government. What we should have done was enact something that I helped co-author, the Economic Growth Act, that would have prevented the automatic tax increases at the end of the year, would have brought down our corporate tax rate. By the way, we have the second-highest corporate tax rate of any industrialized nation in the world, second only to Japan. It's one of the reasons, certainly not the only reason, one of the reasons we continue to lose jobs overseas. If we would make the tax rates more competitive, we would create more American jobs. My plan would allow immediate expensing for small businesses. And in addition, today, I would propose that we just zero out the capital gains tax and the payroll tax for at least two years. What do you need to start a business? You need an idea. You need capital. You need labor. And you need the confidence and faith to jump out there and launch it. We ought to lower the cost on capital and labor, and the way to do that is through reducing the capital gains tax, reducing the payroll tax. Now, that's what we should have done. We didn't do it, and this is an economy that wants to come back. By any historical standard, we ought to already be out of this recession. Now, I didn't have the benefit of learning economics at TVCC under Jerry King, but I did have the benefit of learning economics at Texas A&amp;M University under then-professor Seth Grant. And I have studied some economic history. And I can tell you, again, by any historical standard, we should have already been out of this recession. But the looming storm clouds on the economy that the president and Congress have created are hampering job growth and making lives difficult for the American people. Yes, I did have an occasion to speak to the President of the United States a couple of weeks ago. If you've never been berated by the President of the United States on live national television, it's an interesting experience, one that I do not necessarily recommend to you. Having said that, it was not my purpose to be disrespectful to the president. It was not my purpose to be partisan to the president. It was my purpose to hold the president accountable for the explosion of spending that has happened under his administration, and for that, I offer no apology. I believe that, again, when I asked the president a question, he chose not to answer the question. And the question was, "Mr. President, will this year's budget, like last year's budget, once again triple the national debt and take the government from its historic 20% of our economy to 25%?" He chose not to answer that question. That was on a Friday. He released his budget on a Monday, and guess what? On that day, his document, his budget, answered my question with a resounding yes. Yes, once again, the president's budget does that. I know it's a little hard to see in back, but the president gave us a budget that, from the time he was elected in 2008, will double the national debt in five years. It will triple the national debt in 10 years. We have not seen these levels of debt and deficit in our history. We haven't seen these levels of debt to the economy since World War II. We are on the road to having a debt-to-economy ratio that will rival that of Greece, which I'm sure you have read about or heard about in the press. This is what is happening today. Again, you cannot spend, borrow, and bail out your way to economic prosperity. As a percentage of the economy, at least since the early '90s, we have averaged debt of about 40-43% of the economy. That's the green line, which is the average. The blue line is the actual. The red line is what has been proposed by the president. And what that means is, over the next 10 years, our level of debt to the economy will go from roughly 40-45% to approaching 80%, again, rivaling that of Greece. This is an unsustainable path, absolutely unsustainable. And although I... You may find it hard to believe. I like our president. I don't sense he likes me, but I like him. But I do not like his policies, and I am disappointed in his leadership. And I am disappointed because, as the president of the United States, I believe he has a responsibility to try to solve that problem. His own budget director, who heads up the Office of Management and Budget, says this is unsustainable. He admits it's unsustainable. And so, if I had a chance, I'd ask another question. "Mr. President, where's your plan?" There's only one president. There's only one president. Where is the leadership for you to show us a plan that doesn't bankrupt the nation? Well, here's what he'll tell you. The administration says, "Well, we have two plans to deal with spending. Number one, we are offering a spending freeze." It sounds pretty good, until you read the fine print. And here's what you find out. Number one, the president will exempt 83% of the federal budget from the freezer. He waits a year to turn on the freezer, and then he turns it off after three years. And if you run the numbers, what does it mean? The impact of the president's so-called freeze on spending means, over 10 years, he's proposing we grow government 49.01% instead of 49.27%. My guess is, you can barely see the difference in these two lines. They're not manipulated. That is an Excel spreadsheet. You program in the numbers, it spits out those two lines. That is what the president's proposing in his freeze. Then the president says, "Well, I'm going to have a deficit commission." You know, I'm interested in that, but the deficit is a symptom. It's spending. That's the disease. I can balance the budget today. I can get rid of our deficit today by increasing your taxes 60%. That's the figure necessary to balance the budget that the president has submitted. Over the next 10 years, we will have to increase your taxes 60%. And if that would happen, as I look around at who I assume are some of the students here, I would not want to be in your position trying to find a job when small businesses have had their taxes increased 60%. So I'm disappointed that the president has not put forth a spending plan. And to kind of punt, kick the can down the road and say, "Well, we're going to have a commission to it," is not true leadership in my mind. And I hope that the president will come forth... And listen, he's got young children, like I have young children. I know he cares about this, but I often find myself agreeing with 80% of what the president says. I just disagree with 80% of what he does. But it's not too late, hopefully, for him to do something about this. Now, some of you might be saying, "Well, Congressman, this sounds interesting, but clearly this is all coming through your filter." And yes, I have an open mind, but it's not an empty mind. But listen to some other opinions. The New York Times talks about the president's budget. Quote, "Part of a record $3.8 trillion budget that would boost the deficit beyond any in the nation's history." CNBC, quote, "Even if all goes according to plan, the White House still forecasts U.S. public debt rising above 71% of GDP, the economy, by 2013," three years, "up from 53% in 2009, levels that could spook investors." It's hard to have capitalism without capital. If you want capital, you need investors. This came from the Wall Street Journal. "The budget projects that the deficit will peak at nearly $1.6 trillion in the current fiscal year, a post-World War II record, then decline but remain at economically troublesome levels over the remainder of the decade." Wall Street Journal, again, quote, "All of this spending must be financed, and so deficits in taxes are both scheduled to rise to record levels." Wall Street Journal, again, "As a share of the economy, outlays will reach a post-World War II record of 25.4%." Yes, Mr. President, I was right. This is a new, modern spending landmark. So, again, don't take my word for it. There's some third-party verification and validation of what I have been saying. I truly believe that if we don't control spending today, that the next generation of America will have less freedom, less opportunity, and a lower standard of living. The cost of government is due, in the next 20 years, to go from 20% of our economy to 40% of our economy. That's the path that your Congress and your president has put you on. The good news is, it is not too late to act, and I'm encouraged by what I see nationwide because I think the American people want to take their country back. I think they sense that things are right. And I still believe that, like me, most Americans believe in an America where you work hard today so your children can have a better life tomorrow. They don't believe in an America where the government takes it easy today so our children have to work harder tomorrow. I have worked on three pieces of legislation to try to help solve this. The first piece of legislation is not terribly creatively named, the Spending Deficit and Debt Control Act. It does several things. It's a budget bill that, number one, would convert the budget into something that would actually have the force of law. Today, it's just a suggestion. It would give the president the line item veto to veto wasteful spending. It would put a moratorium on all congressional earmarks, although a small part of the budget, a huge portion of the culture of spending. It would get rid of something called baseline budgeting, which would make an Enron accountant blush, which automatically inflates the cost of all government programs. It would bring in sunsetting so that government programs could not live in perpetuity that were no longer serving their purpose. And it is a very strong budget reform process that also puts binding caps on the level of government spending and the deficit. So I have authored this act. The second thing I've done is I have co-sponsored a bill called the Roadmap for America's Future. If you don't know that Medicare, Medicaid, and Social Security are going broke, let me be the bearer of bad news. Medicare, Medicaid, and Social Security are going broke. Now, these are noble programs. We need a social safety net. But as of today, given the laws of demographics, given our economy, given our debt, given our deficit, they are rapidly becoming Ponzi schemes for the next generation. There is no way that you can solve the nation's fiscal crisis without fundamentally re-engineering these programs for the next generation. So I've co-sponsored legislation that if you are 55 and older, you stay on the current system, nothing changes. If you're under 55, then we would, on the health care side, give you an opportunity to have a refundable, advanceable tax credit to allow you to go into a competitive market and buy the health care that is right for you, right for your family. On Social Security, it would allow you to take a portion of your payroll tax to put into a personal account that would grow over time. These would be administered by the government, and it would still contain a social safety net to where benefits are no worse than they are today. What's interesting is, you can solve our problem without cutting one penny from Medicare and Social Security and Medicaid. But you can't groan at 7% a year if the economy's growing at 1% or 2% a year. So what kind of the language that we use is, you've got to bend the cost curve. And at the end of the day, and I invite any of you to go to the website and check out these bills, but fundamentally, what I'm trying to do here in this legislation that I'm co-sponsoring is to ensure that you, as a citizen of Henderson County in Athens, Texas, that you have a retirement plan and a health care plan that is no worse than the one I have as your member of Congress. You deserve that. And I believe that the Roadmap for America's Future, HR 4529, achieves that purpose. And the Congressional Budget Office is certified that these bills would permanently make Social Security, Medicare, and Medicaid fiscally sound. Now, are they controversial? People say, "Well, Congressman..." People say, well, Congressman, Social Security and Medicare, that's the third rail of American politics. I don't know, and I don't care. I feel I have a moral obligation to my nation. I have a moral obligation to my children to try to save them and the nation from fiscal bankruptcy and preserve the essential social safety net programs of America. Last but not least, in the next couple of weeks, I will introduce a constitutional amendment to put a spending limit on Congress, to limit government to no more than 20% of our economy, which is the post-war average. Now, I'm not naive. I don't believe that it will become law anytime soon. Might not become law in my lifetime, might never become law. I don't know 20% is the right figure. I can't even look you in the eye today and tell you what is the spending plan that gets us there. But I can tell you this: We're facing a crisis. We are truly facing a crisis in the debt and the deficit. And it is time for the nation to have a debate on, is it in time to enshrine in our constitution a limit to how much government can take from the people? Because if we don't, we're going to grow, our children will be in a very different America. It will be an America of smaller dreams. It will be an America of lower standards of living. It will be an America where entrepreneurship and hard work don't count as they do today. And so I want to introduce this. I want the nation to debate this. Now, I don't believe that the Constitution is potter's clay that ought to be molded by the Supreme Court of the day. I think it is bedrock foundation of our republic, but there are instructions on the proper use of the hammer and chisel on this rock. And Jefferson himself said, as one of our most important founding fathers, "To preserve the independence of the people, we must not let our rulers load us with perpetual debt. We must make our election between economy and liberty, or profusion and servitude." Jefferson said, one of the great regrets he had was that there was not a provision in our Constitution to prevent the government from imposing debt on future generations. I don't think it's too late to remedy the problem. And our founding fathers were brilliant, and they were special, but they were not perfect, and they did not have perfect vision. We are on the verge, again, of doubling the size of government in the next 20 years. That will fundamentally change the role of the individual in this society. You cannot have unlimited opportunity and unlimited government. So I will be introducing this in the next couple of weeks. And I want to thank you all for coming out today. And again, I want to thank you, as always, for the privilege of you entrusting me with this office as your United States Congressman. You've heard from me, it's time for me to hear from you. Questions, comments?
Congressman, I'll start off. This afternoon, the Federal Reserve released a report that there will be no significant reduction in the unemployment, unemployment rate in the next two years. Do you know what happens when the employment rate is high as far as citizens, since they can't work? Where do they come? They come to colleges, universities. And specifically, they come to community colleges, because universities won't let them in because their grades are high enough, or because the tuition at University of Texas or Texan A and M is too high.
Now you're going to drag my alma mater?
So they come to community colleges. This year, we saw an increase in enrollment over 20%, but it's getting critical, critical because we do not have the facilities to continue to instruct and provide education for that number of students that are continuing to come in. And I'm not talking about new high school students. I'm talking about as well, adults returning to college to learn additional skills. One of the things that we would like to see, I think, is benefit and provide jobs in the future, especially in the health profession area. And I know not just Trinity Valley, but all of our community colleges. That's where I think a lot of investment can be put into, to help train our students and adult unemployed people to learn job skills, to help them get employment in the future. Could you address that any?
Well, a couple of observations. Number one, getting into the daddy business seven years ago, I assure you, I take education very seriously now. As the father of a six-year-old and a seven-year-old, I don't want them on the family payroll forever. And, you know, I've had some great opportunities in my life, and they are based on a great public school education I received in College Station, Texas, which is actually where I grew up. And the two blocks, I walked down the road to study economics at Texas A&amp;M. So an education is not just fundamental to the livelihood of the individual. Frankly, it is critical to the preservation of a free society. We need a well-educated society. I want to work, though, and make sure that there are jobs on the other end. I just don't want to warehouse people who don't necessarily want to be in an institution of higher learning. And so, again, I believe that to go to the root of the problem, you're going to have to remove the storm clouds that are preventing people from investing. And the culture in Washington today is to vilify people who invest money. I've held a lot of jobs in my life. My first job was cleaning out chicken houses. Great training for Congress, we won't talk about it today. I used to bus tables at the Holiday Inn at College Station, Texas. I used to load windows on the loading dock at the Alenco Window Factory in Bryan, Texas. I used to practice law. I'm trying to live that down. But my point is this: In all the jobs I've ever had, no poor person ever hired me. It was a person of means, who worked hard, who amassed capital, who took a risk, who created a company, that at some point was able to hire me. I don't vilify such people. I don't understand this class warfare that seems to permeate Washington. Again, if somebody wants to be the next Warren Buffett, God bless them, this is America, let them go for it. I don't want to put artificial limits on the American dream. And the beauty of our system is, for somebody to prosper, they've got to carry a lot of people with them. You know, a lot of people like me. I worked my way through Texas A&amp;M. And had there not been people there to hire me, I may never have gotten that degree. And I would probably never have the opportunity, or the privilege, to serve in the United States Congress. So, again, we've got to remove the storm clouds, the vilification of the investor. We've got to get to the root of too much taxation, too much regulation, too much litigation, and in some respects, not enough education. And I understand that, Mr. President, I understand that. And we also have to focus not just on the inputs of education, but the outputs. And we have this odd quirk in America that we seemingly pour money, more money into the system, and a lot of times, our students get more poorly educated on the outcome. We in America train some of the finest engineers and scientists in the world, and they all go home to India and China after they get our degree. So there's a lot of work to be done. That was a long answer to a short question. I better get a little bit more pithy, or nobody will be able to answer something.
Social Security. I hear on the radio that, that's when they pulled $1.4 trillion budget deficit was in discussion, that if they didn't get that, Social Security wouldn't be paid. Now, on the upside, I'm going to get a check. On the downside, I'm the first sucker cut. You didn't talk about Acorn, didn't talk about AmeriCorps, didn't talk about these foreign governments getting billions of dollars. It was Social Security, first one going to get hit. Now, is that just supposed to make the seniors feel good? That's one issue. Second issue, governmental intrusion into the states. One of them's the Environmental Protection Agency. We have a new administrator in Dallas right now, and he comes from a radical environmental group called Downwind Risk. Okay, his comment when he was with Downwind was that the state of Texas was the pig's belly of the United States. So they sent him down here, and his comments are that he's going to straighten this environment out. Rick Perry's been weak on it. Now, that's just, I'm repeating what I read in the paper, what I understand. Homeland Security. They're sending in down here now and starting to get into the county law enforcement, local city police, and state. Now, this is like Waco. And they're coming down here, and they're forcing this on the cities. They're not forcing it at this point, they're requesting it. It's called Code Red. Are you familiar with that, Homeland Security Code Red? No?
Well, not in the context in which you bring it up, but let me hear, let me keep talking.
It's to coordinate the communication between the federal government, state, local, and county police officers. They can call them up at any time, or whatever. Now, they'll tell you that it's for jail escapee, it's for, I guess, a church fire, I don't know. But there's a lot of ways it could be used that would be considered intrusive into the American public's rights and the Constitution, too, I believe. Now, I might be wrong on this, but I'm just repeating what I saw in the paper today. I'd never heard of it, but I knew it was coming. I heard that FEMA and Homeland Security was going to get a little bit more in hand here.
Well, you've got a lot there. Let me see how much I can remember.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry.
First, on Social Security. Right now, Social Security, Medicare, and Medicaid make up about 60% of the budget, and it's growing each and every year. And at present trends, I need to get my numbers straight since the press is here, but on present trends, in about 20, 25 years, they will swallow up the entirety of the federal budget of today. So you cannot deal with the financial crisis without fundamentally saving and reforming those programs, because that's where the money is. Under our law, Social Security benefits will continue to be paid in full until the non-existent Social Security Trust Fund is exhausted. That's a different story. Now, unfortunately, that's four years earlier than thought. At that point, in law, there will be an automatic 24% cut of Social Security unless we enact legislation like that that would save the program. With respect to this guy at EPA, I don't know. I mean, clearly, if you witnessed the exchange I had with the president, he's not going to listen to me. And we don't see eye to eye on a lot of different, a lot of different things. The last comment I would make is simply that, anytime I hear the word "constitution," it's a good day for me. Rarely in congressional debate do you ever hear the term "constitutionality." And I hope and believe the American people are ready to refocus on that bedrock document in question, is what Congress doing constitutional? And more often than not, I believe the answer is probably no, that it is not constitutional. I want a federal government that is limited, that ultimately is there to preserve freedom, to create greater opportunities for future generations. And I want a federal government that does a few things very, very well, and not a lot of things in a mediocre fashion. I've got time for another couple. I hope some of the students may want to chime in here, because, let me tell you, Congress is spending your money. I tell you, let me hit some new people first.
Thank you and your staff for doing a wonderful job there.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, well, I always recognize people for compliments.
This is just more of a curiosity question. You hear the bubble in Japan that happened, what, 10 years ago, 12 years ago at this point, that was almost exactly the same as ours. You know, it started off with a real estate bubble, and our government is almost, line by line, doing the exact same thing, even like with your charge. They didn't shoot up that high, but they're just, they improperly spent for 10 years trying to get out of it. And they couldn't figure out how to do it until they actually started spending back into reinvestments like schools, hospitals, and things along those lines that would make perpetual jobs. How come, like, I hear a lot of people mention it, especially like politicians and stuff, but nobody ever actually says that, why, hey, look, we've seen this, we've seen what happened, but we're doing the exact same thing? I know that you're talking about doing something different, so I'm just curious as to where the mindset is, that we're just going to ignore what happened in Japan, not even 10 years ago.
Well, one, you must take economics from Jerry King. It's clear that you know what you're talking about. Japan did have a similar real estate bubble. Theirs was commercial, ours is residential. They don't have near the quantity of debt that is foreign-owned that we do, so there are some differences. Japan, I believe, attempted eight different stimulus programs over 10 years, and at the end of 10 years, they had created no new jet-net jobs in their society. And their per capita income went from second in the world to 10th in the world. And they took on, I want to say, the largest debt to GDP of any industrialized nation in the world. Again, you cannot borrow, spend, and bail out your way into economic prosperity. And I want, I think if you also study the Japanese experience, you will find, in many ways, you ruined local economies that have now become dependent upon Tokyo for the central government dispersion of funds. And you have seen a legacy of their version of bridges to nowhere, dotting their landscape. Again, I believe that ultimately, you cannot have capitalism without capital. And I think if people had confidence that the administration in Congress would create an environment that customers could afford to buy their products and services, if they knew that there wouldn't be hyperinflation or major tax increases, I believe if you put forth a plan to deal with the debt and deficit, take away the nationalized healthcare, take away the carbon tax, that you would see American jobs come. And listen, the economy will come back. Economies work on reverse gravity. You know, what goes down must come up. It's how long do the people have to suffer? And we are suffering needlessly as a nation, in my humble opinion, due to the policies of this president and this Congress. And if we will believe in ourselves and believe in the bedrock principle of freedom and take advantage of the lessons of history, because there has been no greater housing program, education program, nutritional program in the history of mankind than the American food enterprise system. And if we will calibrate America back to first principles, I believe we will grow the economy and make sure that y'all do not languish in a sea of red debt, red ink, but instead have greater opportunities than anybody else in this room has had. And with that, my trusty aide has given me the sign two or three times that, unfortunately, we are out of time. But again, thank you for coming today, and thank you for the privilege of being your Congressman. I appreciate it.
Congressman Henderson, thank you very much for coming. You're always welcome to come to Trinity Valley Community College. In fact, you're very welcome to come back on May the 14th for our commencement. I hope you haven't forgotten that.
I will try and do that. Now, also, Mr. President, which of my colleagues was I supposed to hit over the head?
I'll leave that to your discretion. That was not my recommendation. That was just what I heard from some of the audience. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you all.
I wish you were president.
Well, God bless you.
I feel a lot better. How did you?
My wife does it. Oh, thank you, thank you, thank you. Shoot.